Good evening.
Welcome to our June 27th Board of Trustees Meeting. Dr. Boucher, are you here? Thank you, Sam.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members. Dr. Murray, I have the pleasure today of introducing Cadet Brittany Bradley for the to do the pledge today. Cadet Brittany Bradley is the daughter of Rufus Edwards and Sheila Sorrells. She is an upcoming senior at Forest Hill High School that holds a GPA of 3.9 on a 4.0 scale. Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Bradley is number three in her 2018-2019 graduating class. Cadet Bradley is an up and coming artist and has been recognized as a Silver and Gold Key Awardee in the Mississippi Museum of Art Alaska Awards. Cadet Bradley is active in her community church in Port Gibson, Mississippi. Brittany Bradley is a cadet and is truly a SAL scholar, athlete, and leader. Brittany Bradley.
May you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'd like to welcome Reverend Chuck Culpepper, who will bring words of encouragement. Reverend Culpepper was born and raised in the Redian and went through public school there. He graduated from Millsaps in 1992, '72, excuse me, with a BA in history, don't we wish. After serving in the Navy for three years, he earned his Juris Doctorate from Ole Miss Law School and practiced law in Columbus, Jackson, and Yazoo City for 13 years. He then attended the Episcopal Church Seminary in Austin, Texas, graduated with a Master Divinity Degree in 1998. He has been an Episcopal priest for 20 years, and he currently serves as the pastor of St. Alexis Episcopal Church near the district office here in Jackson. He is married to the lovely Catherine since 1978. Catherine has been a JPS Special Education Teacher and currently works for JPS as a psychometrist. They have one son who lives in Seattle. Please welcome my friend Reverend Chuck Culpepper.
Thank you. Thank you, my old classmate, Dr. Hurst. Well, I do, I am honored to be here to give you some words of encouragement. I do have words of encouragement for you. Also, I'm going to take the liberty of having one word of sort of godly admonition. We'll start with that, then I'll get to the encouragement. You are, as you all know, you're important in this community because you're stewards of this important institution of Jackson Public Schools. And as stewards, it is your job to preserve, to protect, and to develop this important institution that serves our community, serves our children, and it's important and godly work, I believe. There is a danger, though, in being a steward. Henry David Thoreau of On Walden Pond fame once said, "As a snowdrift is found where there is a lull in the wind, so one would say, when there is a lull of truth, an institution springs up. But truth blows right over it nevertheless, and at length blows it down." The danger of being too identified with this wonderful institution is that you will be stewards and protectors but fail to be truth. Bureaucracies and institutions have a way of self-preserving themselves and maintaining the status quo. And I hope that you will continue to do what I know this board has begun to do, which is to be a voice of truth in this community and to look for changes where they need to be changed and preserve what needs to be preserved. So that's my word of godly admonition. Now, here's the encouragement. I would encourage you not to judge yourselves by the reports that get into the media and into the public eye solely, because we know that the things that get talked about are the problems. It's your job to deal with problems. We know that, like all big institutions and certainly all school districts in this era, Jackson Public Schools has problems, and I think you're doing an effective job of addressing many of them. But I don't want you to miss the many, many blessings that this institution carries out in this community. This year, my church, just right across the street from y'all, St. Alexis Episcopal Church, became one of the partner institutions with George Elementary School. And we know that George was closed at the end of the year, and I want to say that the interim superintendent and the members of the district staff did, I thought, a terrific job in doing that responsible thing, but doing it in a kind, thoughtful, and methodical way. But while we were there, I was, I had two reading buddies, and I would go once a week and meet with these one at a time, meet with the two little second-grade boys and help them read a bit. One of them, one of my book buddies, was just a naturally bubbly, outgoing kid, and he had fun from the start, and he was doing very well. He caught up quickly, and I really just had fun talking to him. But my other book buddy was a sad little guy. I'd seen him, not just when I was talking to him, but I'd seen him at school events. He always looked downcast, he looked depressed and uncertain. Towards the end of the year, because of school activities and my schedule, I wasn't able to see them as often, but I went to their field day. And at the field day, he came up to me smiling and confident, and he said to me, "Hi, I missed seeing you." And I said, "How was your year?" He said, "Great, I passed." And he was so excited. And that means that somebody, not me, but somebody in that school or the teacher, the assistant, the principal, or probably the whole school working together, gave that child something that'll stick with him all of his life. And that is a sense of accomplishment and a sense of being cared for and loved, a sense of whatever his situation is in his life, of knowing that somebody deeply cared for him. This school district daily provides moments of inspiration, moments of miraculous love and education to the important children in our neighborhoods and in our city. And I hope you'll always remember that. May God bless you in your work, and may you always be both steward and truth and remember the good things.
Thank you so much, Reverend Culpepper. Chuck, we certainly... Thank you so much for those marvelous words of inspiration and encouragement and admonition. All welcome, thank you. Let the record show that the board has established a quorum as five of our six members are seated and present. Five of our six, right. We would, item three, do we hear a motion to adopt the agenda as distributed?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second to adopt the agenda as distributed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. While Ms. Williams is not with us tonight, we have received all of our board minutes from May 15, 30, the 5th, the 6th, the 7th, the 12th, and the 20th, including several special board meetings. My board members do hear any... I would suggest we approve all of these together. Do I hear such a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the minutes items A through G on the agenda as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second to adopt the, approve the minutes as distributed, A through G. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved the minutes as distributed. Attorney Turner, do we have persons ready to participate?
No, I have no one.
No, thank you so much. Item six, Dr. Knox, the review of discipline cases.
We have no items for review.
No items for review. Thank you. The superintendent's report, item seven, the cap update. Dr. Merritt.
Good evening, Dr. Hairston and Board of Trustees and Dr. Murray. I'm not sure if you all received a copy via email. If not, I do have a hard copy for you. But know that we are still working very hard to accomplish and make sure that all standards are implemented and that they're compliant. Just a little bit of good news. Standards, we did receive officially clearance on standards 2.3, 2.31, 2.32, 18.1, and standard 18, 18.1, and 18.2. All of those standards deal with the libraries. So I do want to commend Ms. Winston and Erin Mason on a job well done to make sure and ensuring that standard 18 was compliant. We do continue to work very hard with Mr. Stamps, who is our district contact in the Office of Accreditation, to make sure that we have constant communication and that TA is being received and, you know, support is being there. They have started to review graduation records in schools. I think to date, they have reviewed Jim Hill, Lanier, and Murrah. So there are four high schools that are remaining. We did have, in addition to this, we did have a fiscal monitoring visit for federal programs, which is standard 17.6. In our debriefing, Mr. Ransburg did state according to our monitoring instrument in terms of what we refer to as the title box. We did, from a preliminary review, looked as if we cleared some of those standards that were cited in the cap. So we are continuing to work and make sure before principals and everyone started to take vacation, we did have kind of a wrap-up cap meeting in-house. Standard leaders were required to develop a plan of action so that when we return and principals return, we will begin our process of just monitoring, making sure that our internal monitoring instruments are refined and that we are, become eventually 100% compliant with the standards. I did attach a copy of the report from Mr. McCracken for standard 30 and facilities. They are doing a very, a great job in making sure that where there are issues in buildings, that they are addressing them and making sure that we become compliant in many of those areas that we can address. This concludes my report. If there are any questions, I'll...
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. The board also has been working on policy and strategies of some of the language that we included in the cap. And what is our deadline or the next time we have to report or when should I send you an update? Because our portion said to be determined on some of the dates, and the district and the board have identified how we're going to move there. So how do I put that in the record? Just talk with you?
Yes, ma'am, and I do think because of what the citations that are on record, so to speak, had identified that, you know, we must address by July 31st.
31st.
So if we just have documentation that we've addressed it.
That's my recollection, so we're good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks so much.
All right.
Thank you for that report.
Thank you, and we appreciate you all's support.
Madam President, Board Members and community, we are, as Dr. Merritt mentioned, we are moving forward with a sense of urgency as it relates to those cap items, and we are planning for the next school year. We have July, the week of July 16th is administrative training, administrator, training for administrators, and the week of July 23rd is teacher training. So the professional development department is working on putting those trainings together so that we can support our teachers. We have, we're moving upon registration. We have registration, which is starting in a few weeks. But we decided in an effort to better support our parents, last year, in many of our schools' parents had to wait for extended periods of time for many reasons. So we've brainstormed, tried to come up with ideas for better supporting our parents. So what we've decided, of course, we will have our traditional registration as noted beginning on July 23rd, but we will provide an opportunity for our parents from July the 12th through July the 20th to make an appointment, and by feeder pattern, the days are listed here, they can report to Poindexter, to our enrollment center, and complete their registration in advance of the July 23rd registration. So we encourage our parents, we'll be putting this information out, and we encourage parents to take advantage of this opportunity to register their students. We want all students, 100% of our student population, registered in school on the first day of school. So again, we will be promoting this opportunity for our parents beginning July 12th. July 2nd, our Appointment Management System will open, and our parents will make appointments online, and then, of course, they'll have the opportunity to report to Poindexter on the days listed here, or after July 23rd, they can take their traditional procedure and go to their home schools. So again, that's kind of all we have, those are things that are on the horizon. So we are moving forward with a sense of urgency.
Thank you, that's very encouraging. How will we get the word out to our parents? Through robo-calls or...?
We will, robo-calls, we will also, the information is already on the website.
On the web.
It's already on the website, and we'll be communicating via robo-calls as well. Yes, come on up, Doc. Doc Sarge's office is managing this initiative, so he has some additional information he'd like to share.
Good afternoon. Just real quickly, we're also reaching out to our local churches. We're going to get a flyer out to them as well, so they can make announcements within their church bulletins as well as doing with whatever service or programs they have. We've also reached out to Ms. Thiel Faulkner, our Director of our Parents and Partners in Ed. She has various community contacts that she's going to share the information with. We reached out to Ms. Rosalyn McCoy, I know works with the Jackson Council PTA. They're also going to help us spread the word. Sherwin Johnson, of course, our Executive Director of Media Relations, is getting everything out on our social media outlets and also is working with our local television stations and radio stations to get information out that way. And hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to make a few personal appearances once we return from the fourth break. And so he's working on that as well. So we're using as many outlets as we can think of.
Great, thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
That ends my report.
Thank you. Item eight, our information only, our schools at risk priority and focus schools update.
Right, yes, ma'am. Good evening again. You all have received copies of the end-of-year reports. Basically, the thing that I do want to note on there is that there should have been a comparative analysis of the data where you can look at and see where schools, where they stood last year and where they stand this year. Approximately three weeks ago, those schools that are in school improvement did receive approval for an additional pot of money, which probably totals for those schools $3 million, which is, I think, the sum total. So we will begin to aggressively, the plan is in place, but begin the implementation and planning upon the principal's return on July the 9th.
You said that you anticipate data from where the schools were last year, this time compared this year. Is that not, do we not have data from the beginning of this school year to the end of the school year? Are the same children, or am I misunderstanding?
Yes, that should have been reflected on the report as well. You should be able to see it all, if I recall correctly. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. So there's an extra step you're doing at a school analysis from spring to spring?
Right, okay. And I can provide that information in the, what will not be included on that report, and I don't think it was included in the current report you have, is the growth, but just basically looking at student proficiency. And one thing I do want to note, when we look at that at the elementary school levels, it's only going to reflect grades three, four, and five, and not K2 because they are not assessed. And we can give some projected data based on universal screener, which is STAR.
And the student attendance and staff attendant rates, do we see improvement there across most of our schools?
It's getting better, there's still work to do.
Okay, thank you for your frankness. Thank you for your work, and we appreciate the principals and teachers for their work.
Thank you all.
Item B, Ms. Slater, Director of Academies, information only, the aviation pathway at Provine High School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to give you information about the Academy of Scientific Innovation, the aviation pathway at Provine. We've established that unique opportunities for the scholars of Provine High School by capitalizing on community support regarding the establishment of the Hope Credit Union Academy of Business and Finance. Similarly, we are working to solidify the Academy of Scientific Innovation by establishing an aviation pathway. To this end, we have engaged in discussions, brainstorming sessions, and planning meetings with several industry partners, educational institutions, and agencies to determine the appropriate steps in developing effective academy pathway focusing on unmanned aircraft systems, known as UAS. The UAS description encompasses a variety of aerial devices, but our most popular, that being the drone. The Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, AOPA, has granted access and approval for the Jackson Public School District to offer their industry-approved aviation curriculum to students beginning fall 2018-2019 school year. More than 70 schools will implement the Aircraft Owners Association's Aviation Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Curriculum across the nation. JPS is only, is one of only 25 schools nationwide given the opportunity to use this high school aviation STEM curriculum. We will offer the content of this course as an introductory curriculum to the CTE curriculum being prepared by the Research and Curriculum Unit at MSU as a CTE pathway. JPS is one of only three schools in the state poised to take advantage of this unique opportunity presented by the RCU as they prepare to implement the aviation CTE pathway. The other school districts will be Pascagoula and Lamar County. Who will be our first cohort of students? These students are, will be currently enrolled as Provine High School rising 10th graders. These students will have the opportunity to complete a course of study in UAS model construction and flight that will span three years. Because of their studies in this pathway, students will be prepared and expected to sit for the FAA Part 107 certification, which will grant them license to legally fly the UAS for professional applications. UAS construction, construction and flight principles and form lasting relationships with industry professionals. Excuse me. Although this is a major benefit for the aviation pathway, we will also find, we will also find other invaluable outcomes as a result of their participation. Students will gain knowledge of the principles of aviation, UAS construction and flight principles, and form lasting relationships with industry professionals that will serve to guide their growth as students as they make educational and career decisions. Industry partners have already made verbal and written commitments to support the Aviation Academy through personal interactions with students and teachers. Professional development has already begun, and additional workshops have been scheduled as mandated by the curriculum team of the RCU and MDE. We currently have two teachers participating. While there are multiple uses for unmanned aircraft systems, research concludes that precision agriculture and public safety are the most promising commercial and civil markets. According to a 2007 Boeing study, there's a growing demand for aviation industry jobs, and it's not slowing down. Seven, 637,000 commercial air pilots, 648,000 technicians, and 839,000 cabin crew members are needed globally within the next 20 years. It is our desire to continue the growth and development of the Academy of Scientific Innovation Aviation Pathway to meet this need. Are there any questions I can address at this time?
Not a question, just a comment. This is an excellent opportunity for students. It will encourage them to move into that area, and it also will probably affect attendance, you know, because you're giving them something that they can plan on for the future, in terms of career. So just wanted to commend you on that initiative.
Thank you.
It does sound like a wonderful program. I was curious, are students who don't live in the Provine zone, would they be able to attend?
We have not planned for that possibility at this time. We hope that as we grow the program, we'll be able to open it up to students across the city to participate.
How many students do you anticipate participating from Provine? You're training two teachers currently?
Currently, we're training two teachers. Our goal is to start with two classes.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I always just wondered, is there, what is the cost to the district for implementing the academy?
We're receiving, well, I just received that information today from MDE. There's a projected cost, it's quite large. However, we'll bring that information to you as soon as we can. At this time, the cost is zero to us right now, but looking forward to the next two, second and third year, we will, there will be some costs involved, but we have a strong commitment from our partners in helping us to get the materials that we need and the equipment for the students.
So quite large.
I really haven't looked at that number. Like I said, it was just sent to me this afternoon by Mr. Langley from RCU. So there'll be further, further reports once we get that information.
Okay, and is that in the budget for next year or...?
Again, the preliminary work does not, does not require funding, the work that we're doing now.
Right.
But also, there will be CTE dollars as well. You mentioned earlier that this is a CTE course, and we should be able to leverage funds through CTE as well and with partners. Of course, the academy initiative has always been, we've always had to rely on, in order to do it effectively, community partnerships. And so we'll definitely, that's one of the reasons that we're out working with these different industry partners to try to leverage that support, because this is preparing workers for industry. And so we feel confident that we'll be able to, you know, to support the program, but initially, there is no, there is no budgetary impact for this year.
CD's, Career Technical Education?
Yes, sir.
And are those state dollars, federal dollars?
The, federal dollars. But the district receives some dollars for courses that are approved. And so again, we would have to look at, we would have... And so again, we would have to look at, we would have to look at exactly what that would look like and.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hairston, if there are no, no more questions, the informational item does contain a license agreement that does need to be approved by the board for the curriculum.
Right. So we need a motion to approve this item for, for, for how long then? I'm getting concerned now about the quite large.
For the 18-19 school year, the license agreement, just to use the curriculum. That is the preliminary.
But we don't know yet the cost of the curriculum?
No, there's not a charge, there's no charge.
There's not a charge for the curriculum.
There is no cost for the AOPA curriculum that is provided to school districts free of charge through that association.
And that curriculum is good for how long?
Um, the curriculum we're using is the first-year model. Our second and third-year curriculum will come from MDE.
And so there'll be no cost there either?
That's right.
Great.
And, and also another note, as a part of the, the bond, there is, in that literature, there is some work, there is some infrastructure issues that are part of that as well to creating those innovative spaces. So that, that, when we talk about quite large, those are, those are some of the, the figures that we have to consider. And so we are, we did take that into consideration, part of that, as a part of the bond work as well.
So that, that was my thought in connecting it to the bond issue that some of our upgrades around the 21st century education, which ESSA requires in CTE areas particularly. So we are already aligning the work we do now and the plans.
Yes, ma'am.
For what will be in sync with.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that was, thank you for making that clear because that's very important because we don't want to get committed to something that is not a part of our strategic plan moving forward. So what needs approval tonight is the one-year use of the curriculum for the first year.
Yes, ma'am. The curriculum license and agreement form from AOPA Aviation STEM Curriculum.
Great. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Dr. Hairston, if it's appropriate, I would like us to consider holding off on a vote to approve the curriculum until we see the cost information and how we intend to pay for it over the lifetime of the engagement. I just, I think that's prudent in terms of, you know, while it's no cost the first year, we wouldn't want to get into a situation where we have students excited about a program and then we get into a, I think just it'd be helpful to have additional information.
I totally agree. So I probably, my misunderstanding was that it, it was not the curriculum itself, but there are clearly auxiliary costs in addition. So I totally agree with that observation.
So I was gonna say, and if that's the board's desire, then I would advise you give some, some direction to the administrative because I think it's been indicated that you've got teachers in training. And my assumption is that because they didn't initially think that board approval was required for this, they went on and started at least with the teacher training. So now if there's the possibility that the board wants to reconsider it, given the light of the additional cost, then I think either discuss with Dr. Murray or just direct that, that be put on hold until the board makes a decision as to whether or not you do want to proceed with the program.
My recommendation would be, again, that prior to approving this, I, I just think we should see what the plan is to pay for this in years two and three. And in terms of the teacher training, it looks like one of the trainings is probably already completed, and the other one ends tomorrow. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I don't know that we can walk that one back. And so, and it's, it's, um, so, but I do think, again, I just, this is a, a point of just making sure that we, we have the plan, that we had, if we're gonna vote on something, that we have cost information in place prior to, to doing that. So, so maybe by way of direction, I would just say maybe at the next board meeting, if the plan could be provided, you know, if it's gonna be federal funds that pay for it in year two and three and the figure, that would be helpful for me in terms of making it.
And prior to the board meeting.
That can be provided.
Prior to the board meeting.
That can be provided.
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide that board material next.
In a timely fashion.
Yes, ma'am, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sevan. Okeydoke, where are we? Ms. Miller, thank you, my friend. Review our annual audit for fiscal year ending June 30.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston, Dr. Murray, members of the board. We are pleased to present to you the annual audit for fiscal year ended June 30, 2017 as completed by our CPAs, our independent CPAs. And very excited about the report that we're wanting to give you, and I, you all have a copy in case you want to read all of the details, but just to give a brief overview of where we are, we continue to see an increase in our fund balance, which is a, a strong indicator of our fiscal stability. Several years ago, if you can look at the information I gave you, you look at 2012, we had a fund balance around $4.2 million. And as you are aware, when I send you the monthly financial reports, we spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $11 to $12 million a month. So $4.2 million is woefully underfunded. We are pleased to present to you a fund balance at, as of June 30, 2017 of $21,403,041, which is, which represents 12.45% of our general fund. The requirements, the, the board has a fund balance policy of 7%, as well as the State Department has a part of accreditation standard four, has a requirement of 7% of district maintenance revenue. And we continue to improve there, continue to meet those goals, and that is one of the things we're most proud of. Of course, fund balance represents not only just cash, but it also represents cash and cash equivalents. It indicates our balance that we have in property, real property. All types of things make up the fund balance, but that shows a sign that we are continuing to head in a positive direction. One of the things that we are also most proud of is that this is the first audit that the district has received where there have been no question calls, no federal fund, no federal findings, no issues whatsoever as it comes to the operation of the district as it relates to the operation as a whole. So we are extremely pleased to present this report. We are also, I presented to, I provided to you also some good news that we got from Standard and Poor's back in probably 2010, 2019, 2010. They withdrew their rating from the district, which meant that our financial outlook was a little unstable. We had a history of turning in late audits, and so not only did we get that back in 2013, we have received an upgrade from an A to an A+. Which is exciting work for my staff and the district and with the board's support to continue in that positive direction. That means that basically we borrow money for less than what folks who don't have that good credit rating does. So that's a, that's a good sign of where we are, where we continue to be. It helps us when we say no, so we know we're heading in the right direction. I do want to note to you that there are some accounting issues in the audit. You will see as a result of GASB 68, which is an accounting regulation, that all state agencies now have to include the amount of their PERS liability, the amount that the school districts have in PERS for all its retirees, even though it's not an obligation of the school district or the state agencies. GASB 68 was encouraged by some of our state government to make sure that school districts reflect that amount in their audits. So that is a huge amount for us out of, I don't wanna give you this information, out of $17 billion in state retirement liability that the state pays for all our retirees, our percentage is 2.35% of that. So we see a decrease in our amount that's in our budget, and primarily that's tied to the fact that we had a lot of vacancies, so we don't have a lot more people contributing that the state has to continue to pay, in, pay liability on. But I will note that today, we received notice that the PERS liability on the part of school districts will rise by 1.65% in 2019. So that will be a cost that while it's really good that we get it now, we can budget for it in 19, for 1920, that will be an increased cost to the district. And given where we are as far as salaries are concerned, it looks like about a one, 1.2 to 1.4 million dollar increase. So just want you to have that on the radar for 1920. You'll hear it again. But we are very excited about this audit and the work that the staff has done, the, the school district has done, because this is, this is a group effort. This is, everybody contributing to the positive position that the district has been placed in. So again, we are pleased to provide this information to you as a part of your review, as a part of the update of where the district is, and also as we meet our accreditation standards as a result, requires with finances.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your and your team being such good stewards of the district's funds.
Thank you.
Ms. Lyons, items D and E, administration position changes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Hairston, Dr. Murray, members of the board. The administration presents for information only, item D, which is a position change for, for the administrator for the 18-19 school year, and item E, which are location changes for administrators for the 18-19 school year.
Thank you so much. Board members, you reviewed these documents?
Item D requires approval.
Board members, we received these documents and you have had a chance to review those administration position changes presented. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the position change.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Hearing none. Item D has been approved, those position changes. Item E?
Item E, our location changes for information only for school year 18-19 for the following administrators listed in board material.
Thank you. We have received that information as well. Thank you for your information. We don't need to approve anything. Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Okay. Are we done? Action items? Oh, you're next, go. Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Item A, the, oh, this is always a good one, approval of the Mississippi Employer Assisted Housing Teacher Program. Thank you.
The administration asks for the approval of the Mississippi Employer Assisted Housing Teaching, Teacher Program Loan Agreement between a current JPS teacher and the Mississippi Department of Education.
Thank you. We have received that as well. Board members, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Item A is approved. Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Thank you.
Dr. Merritt, items B and C.
Yes, ma'am. The administration recommends approval for items D and C, which the two are Director of School Support and Director of English Learners and Special Populations.
Great, it was, I know these are very important positions. Board members, do we hear a motion to approve B and C?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve items B and C, job descriptions for Director of School Support and Director of English Learners and Special Populations.
Can I ask a quick question before we vote? Are these positions in the budget for next year?
So I will speak to that. It comes out of the federal programs budget. Out of our allocation, you can allocate up to 20% of your total title application, your approved amount for administration. Currently, I think we're at 10, or I know it's not above 11% on my previous calculation. And so we're, it's in the federal programs budget where it will be funded.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for that information. We've heard a motion to accept items B and C, and it's been seconded, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. These items have been approved. Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Ms. Miller, approval to amend the 2018-19 school calendar.
Thank you again, Dr. Hairston, Dr. Murray, members of the board. The administration is seeking approval to amend the 18-19 school calendar to reflect a change in the first-term parent-teacher conference day from Monday, October 15th to Monday, October 22nd. The change is being requested in order to accommodate the time that teachers will need to develop those grades and so that they can share those first-term grades with parents as they come to pick those reports up. We found that that's one of the best times to have parents in, and so we're requesting that that change be made on the calendar.
Thank you. It's a reasonable change. Board members, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the school calendar to make allowance time for teachers to prepare those reports for parents. Monthly financial report, Ms. Miller.
Before we vote.
Oh, I'm so sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, so approved. Ms. Miller, item D. Item E?
Board members, you have the monthly financial report for the month ended May 31st, 2018. It contains your required reports, the statement of fund balance, the budget statement, budget status report, the statement of your cash reconciliations, and also your cash flow report. I do want to note, at, I know that you all have done some extensive training with Mississippi School Boards Association, and one of the things they told you to indicate, I'm like tooting my own horn again, is that the cash flow is, needs to be at a positive position at the end of June. I, I would like you to look at the cash flow at the end of May, it's at $11.3 million, and we are projecting around $12.8 million. We will give you a projected June, just as we are closing out the year, what we'll give you in June is a projected, an audited number. Of course, we have some cleanup that has to occur that we go well into July so that we can give you some final numbers. But again, we think we're trending in the right direction to have a really good, positive fund balance at the end of the year and a positive cash balance, I'm sorry, as well as fund balance, but a positive cash balance, which again indicates our financial strength and where we're headed, and we appreciate all of the support that y'all have, have given us.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments, board members? Do I hear a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The report has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Consent agenda items under finance, A, approval of accounts payable and activity fund, Ms. Miller.
Yes, board members, if I can, uh, put A and also D together, those are the, so that, we would be requesting approval of accounts payable and activity fund claims from May 5th through June 15th of 2018.
I was just asking, do we want to run, run this vote as a consent agenda? And if there are items that board members would like to pull, we could pull those.
Do all of those together?
I would, if we did do that, I would like to pull, uh, C, uh, item C and item F.
F. C and F, those are the only ones? Okeydoke, so you want to pull those out of the discussion for now?
Out of the consent agenda.
Okay.
For discussion.
Okay. So how do we do that?
You would have a motion to approve all the consent agenda finance items with the exception of C and F, and then you would take up C and F individually.
I move that we approve all of the consent agenda items with the exception of C and F.
Thank you. Well stated. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We have approved that. Ms. Miller, are you with us?
Yes. Item C is the approval of a three-year contract between Jackson Public Schools and JD Certified Public Accountants and Advisors, POLC. Public Accountants and Advisors, P O L C, for the annual audits ended fiscal year June 30, 18 till June 30, 2018 to June 30, 2020. The administration is recommending that, um, we accept and go in, enter into a contract with JD Certified Public Accountants to do our independent audit for the next three years. We, um, the, we are required every three years to change our audit firm, and that's, um, we also are required to use those audit firms that have been approved and authorized through the State Department of Audit to conduct school audits. We, um, as we presented earlier today, we use Bruno and Terevalon, um, out of New Orleans. They were extremely helpful and, and timely. One of the challenges, though, that we had is that their, um, partners are in New Orleans, and sometimes it was difficult to get things because we pushed to get, make sure that audit is in not on the deadline, but before the deadline. So, one of the challenges that we had was basically with an out-of-town, with out-of-town partners. It was very difficult sometimes to get that information back and forth between them. We are, uh, requesting to utilize JD Certified Public Accountants and Advisors, which is a local minority firm, that, um, are, they are familiar with the district. As a matter of fact, two of their, um, one of the primaries has been, um, extremely familiar with the district, has done previous work with us before, and two of the, uh, field work personnel are also familiar with the district. The, one of the most crucial parts of an audit is the field work, and being able to come into the district and spend weeks going through our books and our financials is one of, that sets the tone for how we move forward. These, uh, professionals are right down the street. We can put our hands on them. We have decla- we have some space in our office for auditors to come in and do field work, and so, um, they are capable, I think, of handling the work, and so we would like to move forward. We did receive some, um, other responses to our requests, um, but they were a little bit more expensive, and, uh, one of the firms, we had done work before, and, um, they were also very small and not as familiar with the district. So, we are recommending, uh, the, that the board enter into this contract with this firm.
How does the cost of this contract compare to our previous contract?
It's actually about $5,000 less.
And you mentioned the size. What is the size of this firm?
Um, six, I believe, total.
Six, and three of their members, you mentioned have previous experience doing, um, audit work in the district?
Yes, and in other school districts, um, all over the state.
Is, um, how, how recently?
Um, they just completed, I think, Hines County's this past time.
Oh, the district, uh, our district?
Oh, our district. Um, one of the principals just completed it. The other two have done field work with a previous firm that we used, uh, back in 2014, 2015.
Okay.
What's your pleasure, board? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the, uh, audit, uh, contract with JD Certified Public Accountants and Advisors for annual audits for fiscal years 2018 to 2020.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Uh, item C has been approved.
Thank you. Board members, item, um, F is approval of the various budgets for the 2018, 2019 school year. What you have before you, as we discussed in the public hearing last week, uh, is basically the district maintenance and the district maintenance supported budgets along with, uh, food service. We, um, we had some conversation, uh, during the public hearing about some of the challenges that we faced and some of the recommendations that we made as far as making reductions. I just want to make sure that, you know, the public understands that this is a very tight budget. The state's, uh, allocation for M A E P, our allocation this year was reduced by 6.5 million dollars, uh, which makes our total since 2013 from underfunding of about 91.3 million dollars. We, um, continue to see that, uh, number concern us. Of course, uh, the basics for that, the basis for that number starts at our ADA. That's why we are, as, as Dr. Murray mentioned, encouraging all of our parents to get all of our students registered on the first day of school and not just get registered, but come to school every day. That number is driven by the number of students that attend schools 63% of the day, at least for this year. Um, there was a lot of conversation, of course, about the M A E P funding, um, but that model did not change, but we do believe that there will be some changes upcoming. We, um, went back and looked at the budget. I think there was some discussion about some recommendations that we had made to provide with you, to provide the district with a balanced budget. The district looked at 50, uh, positions, teacher positions, that were unfield based on attrition. We also reduced the budget by 13 central office administrative positions. Um, we made some other general reductions, and we had recommended some reductions in some contracts, but board members, uh, at your encouragement, we were able to restore those contracts for parents from public schools and also the Mississippi Symphony to the current level. Um, of course, we are really excited about the continued, uh, partnership with those partners, and we know that they will continue to support our students and our educational goals. We did make some adjustments, uh, for that $50,000. So, um, again, I, I will, you know, caution everyone that this is an extremely tight budget. This is probably, um, one of the most, um, and I, I think I said that last year, but this is one of the most challenging budgets that we have. And, um, if you look at the, the difference, we, we have a current budget of 206.5 million dollars, and this year's budget is 197.7. That's significant. That's somewhere around the budget level of 2013. So, we will be monitoring the budget day one very closely. Um, we will be making sure that if things are, are, are coming to us, they're not budgeted. We will have, uh, conversations with the administration. We have, um, discussed putting in some processes in place that before items come before you, that they are insu- we are insured that they are within the budget, and if they are not, that there are appropriate adjustments made. And so, we will have some very pointed dis- discussions about where we go from here. We, um, we were very pleased, though, and, and this board supported, uh, an increase in teacher salary, uh, for the A and the double A from years zero to five, and we were very excited to, to, to be able to include that in this budget. That, we think, is, um, substantial. It helps in our recruiting efforts. We're able to, um, proudly say now that we are above the areas, um, the area, other area schools in those two areas. We were already above them on the 3A and 4A, but that was a support that, that you supported several months ago, and we were able to include it in the budget. Um, the district maintenance budget does include, out of 197.7 million dollars, 114.5 million dollars is directly attributed to instruction. So, that's about 57.95 or 58% of our budget is directly with instruction at schools, school administration, um, instruction. We have, um, a maintenance and operations budget of about 14.68%, which is about level from where we are this year. Uh, of course, uh, one of the things that we are, are challenged with are building maintenance and repairs. This budget does include half a million dollars in that for building maintenance and repairs, which, uh, we understand is not adequate, but we are, um, quite positive that with the approval and the passage of the bond issue on August 7th, that will free up a lot of money so that, um, our, our buildings and our infrastructure will be able to be repaired. That half a million dollars, um, will not go a very long way, but 65 million will. Um, also included in, in your budget are, as I said, those district and district maintenance supported budgets, uh, exceptional education, alternative education, um, athletics, uh, vocational education, and J R O T C. And with the exception of J R O T C and athletics, you do see some reductions there. Again, all those departments are aware of the challenges that we face. One good thing about vocation is vocation tends to receive a lot of additional state money, and they're able to support their instructional activities with those state funds. So, we are, um, we are again pleased to provide you with a, with a balanced budget. This does include, um, it also includes the Title I budget for 2018, 2019. We are working continuously on that budget, Title I, and also the consolidated cost pool, which is, as Dr. Merritt indicated, that's where the administrative salaries are, and that's where that, that set aside is. But, um, again, Title I, uh, has a 15.5 million dollar budget, and we've already received notice that we're going to be reduced there about $200,000. So, we will continue to watch this very, very closely and, um, but continue to s- make sure and ensure that the budget is balanced, and we still do no impact on instruction, and we meet the requirements of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, for you and your team's attention to detail, and there has been a lot going on, and we appreciate the hard work that goes into developing a budget. And we are very pleased to see that our teachers were able to get their raise. Um, what's your pleasure, board? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the budget as presented for the next fiscal year.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We have approved the budget.
And I forgot to thank those of you on the budget committee that I worried all night and, and early mornings. I appreciate yours and your indulgence, and I promise I'm gonna stop sending Saturday morning emails, but thank you.
Thank you for your work. The work has to get done. Okay, now, we have, um, are we good? Ms. Miller?
We approve, no, not ready. It's, uh, district, district.
Yeah, we're on consent agenda.
Yeah, consent agenda. Well, we, did we cover all everything, A through H?
Yes.
Okay, okay. We approved, okay, good deal. So, we're in general? A, Dr. Sargent?
Well, uh, I would recommend we use the same approach if there are items that board members would like to pull. I, I don't have any, actually.
I'd like to pull item E for consideration. Approval to continue insurance coverage for Jackson Public Schools. Just have some questions.
Okay. Great. Um, we'd already talked about D earlier. Um, let me see about H. I'm good. Okay, so how do we proceed? Do we need to vote on that?
I would move that we a- uh, approve consent agenda items A through D and F through J, holding E for consideration.
Great. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Uh, item E?
Item E.
Item E. Ms. Chrisler? Dr. Chrisler?
I'm sorry, mine said L. I didn't realize it changed.
Okay, well, let's be sure we're all on the same one. Robbie?
Well, I have the item E as the continual, uh, the approval to continue insurance coverage for Jackson Public Schools effective July 1st, 2018.
Okay.
I believe that's the item.
Yeah, they're.
I mean, my, my fundamental question is, um, there seems to be a discrepancy on the, uh, executive summary and agenda that we have, um, whether or not we're approving a two-year contract or a one-year contract. Um, and it, it seems that, um, we've been well-served by the insurance agency that we've been engaged with, but, um, my question is, is the contract, what's the length of time for this contract?
There's one particular policy that's for two years. In the proposal, you'll see under, uh, the property policy, it's a two-year policy.
Well, I didn't have an E.
All other policies is one year.
Is there a reason to have different lengths of time for the policies?
Um, we had a unique situation with our property policy. Um, in order to get the pricing that we got this year for our property policy, um, we agreed to enter into a two-year, uh, policy with our property carrier, considering that our current carrier was, uh, planning to increase our premium by close to $900,000. So, we were able to negotiate that pricing with the carrier, or our agent was.
Thank you. What's your pleasure, board? Are you good, Dr. Luckett?
Um, I would answer my question, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, how do we proceed on each of these items?
Move that we approve the insurance coverage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. We have approved the, to continue the insurance coverage. Thank you, Dr. Chrisler.
Welcome.
Okay, do. Item 11? 12. Approval of staff personnel? Ms. Lyons?
To Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray, members of the board, the administration asks for the approval of staff personnel matters with a correction to the date, uh, listed, um, in G8. The date should be July 2nd, 2018. That's G8. The date should be July 2nd, 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Board, do we have any questions for Ms. Lyons on this information? Do I hear a motion to approve the staff personnel matters with the correction of item G8, which should read July 2nd, 2018?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The motion has passed. Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Thank you.
Do we have other business?
An executive session.
We have one executive session item.
Executive session item.
Two executive session items.
Mine is great.
Mine is two.
Good idea. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, we will hear a motion to go into executive session shortly, but I did want to share with those of y'all who are here that, um, the board appreciates your patience as we continue our due diligence regarding the selection of a permanent superintendent. Um, we appreciate all the support we receive from across the district and participating with us in this process, but we are still engaged with our due diligence to be sure that all of our candidates that you met, uh, rec- receive proper vetting by board members. Uh, and, um, we will keep you posted regarding the selection of a permanent superintendent as soon as the process is complete. Comments or questions, board members? I did want to let you know, thank you for your patience, and we are still in the process. Okay, do I hear a motion to consider going into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We will, uh, go into executive session.
Close the meeting.
Close the meeting. We are closed. Thank y'all for joining us.[1755.83]